Oh, you're on.
Why not?
There's a lot of stuff you have to do. Did you see it?
Kind of a negative.
Thank you.
Thanks, Patty. Okay. We'll go ahead and call the January twenty-six Commissioners Meeting to Order. We've got Lou Showers here today with Grace Baptist Church to give us our prayer. Morning.
As you're wondering, my family bought me this. I support the second best team in the league. Next year, they're going to be the best team. I like to laugh and have some fun with it. I'd just like to say, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and to open this meeting with prayer. It's something I believe is needed far more in our country today. I want to thank you as a community. I've lived here now almost eighteen years. I hope I'm here another eighteen, maybe more. This community is a testimony of what our country was originally established to be. A country that is under God and united. And the people in this community really reflect that. I was, I know, I'm not supposed to preach. But I was really touched when I went through the East Side Park just recently. And they had not only a nativity there, but also had a Keep Christ in Christmas. I've lived in some places in the country where that would have been considered a crime. And I thank you people, and I thank the people of this community and this county for their respect for our constitution and their respect for our country. Father, as we come to you in prayer to begin this meeting this morning, we are reminded of the fact that you are the one who created government to begin with. Its goal was to serve the people for the best interest of all. We thank you, Lord, that you declare that you are the one who puts those who are in leadership into their office. You have a reason and a purpose for the selection of each and every one of them. I pray that you will be with them this morning, Lord, as they conduct your business, the business of the county. Give them wisdom that goes beyond normal human wisdom as they make difficult decisions. And may the decisions reflect that which will best serve the people that they've been called to minister to. Be with each and every one of them. Guide them, direct them, and bless them. And with this, I pray, amen.
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 Thanks, Lou. Appreciate it. All right, welcome, everybody. We did have a highway meeting at the Highway Department this morning. Michael Taylor and Ron were present. We discussed CCMG discussion on funding, billings for base off of Highway Project Fifty-seven, Bridge Number Two Eighty-two, a trailer to haul an excavator, safety discussions, and an update ADA plan. And Ron made the motion to adjourn, and I second it. All right, Highway Department, Phil?
Hey, good morning.
Morning.
First up there, Bridge One Fifty-five, just to bring you up to speed. After talking with Lockmueller Group, realizing that it's not possible to, feel like it's the best recommendation to hold off until next, twenty-two, spring of twenty-two, to put in the grant funding to build a bridge with CCMG money. I do have a meeting scheduled with Lockmueller Group tomorrow at the bridge site. Would like to attend, I believe that's ten AM. Any way to get them, go ahead and let them get started on the design process for the bridge. But that way, we can go ahead and get our development done, our railroad coordination done, move forward from there, be ready for next springs, all right, grant call. Speaking with Ron this past week, too, if he or someone, Bryant or someone, is willing to, to help try to get ahold of CSX, if we can get them moving again on the funding, the funding talks, that would be excellent if we could do that. I do know from talking to CSX employee there at Montgomery, I don't know if you've all noticed, but they're taking out the, all the rail sightings here in our county. Also said that they're taking them out basically from Vincent's all the way to Brownstown, I believe is what he said. They're scrapping the rail, I don't know if you've noticed, but scrap price is up. Scrapping the rail, their intent is to replace, that money to replace the ties, rail, cross ties on the main line, so that the speed limit can be increased on the railroad line from twenty-five mile an hour, it is currently, back up to fifty miles per hour. The track is strictly a bypass for the main line that runs St. Louis around through Indy, back down into, whatever. So if there's problems over on that line, then they would route trains through here. Because currently, they don't, we don't see hardly any trains being routed through here because of the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. Usually, things are fixed on that line quicker than what would be for the train to come through here going twenty-five mile an hour. So they don't, haven't been using it. I thought that was interesting news, anyway. Potentially see more train traffic in half.
Related to CSX, Judy with Lockmueller Group, they have a contact that she's going to reach out through their organization. And if not, she'll get back with me, and then we'll run our traps.
Okay. Excellent. Okay, you guys should have the CCMG letter of support there. I had emailed that over to Patty. The projects I would like to recommend for us to apply for on this current call, which is due at the end of the week here, are fourteen hundred east up, it runs from State Route Five Fifty-eight, which is the state road that goes into Crane Naval, runs from there north up to the Green County line, right through the Tech Park. The other one in that area, which I had added, it wasn't on the original list I'd emailed you guys. But it's sixteen fifty north, comes off of Five Fifty-eight, and it was originally thought that we were going to do some kind of roundabout there that never materialized. But we, instead of doing concrete all the way to the highway, there's a section of about six hundred and sixty-five feet long of asphalt. It's a pretty rough condition there by the highway. We would like to go ahead and mill that out and replace it while, while we're there. The cost of those two projects, the fourteen hundred east job would be, the engineer's estimate is one thirty-four, four sixty-two, and the sixteen fifty north would be twenty thousand nine eighty-two. And then the other project would be Glendale Road, starting at State Road Two Fifty-seven, going into Glendale, through Glendale, over to the Corning Road or Eight Hundred East, and then back southbound on Seven to Seven Hundred South, all the way over to Offersville, and then back to Offersville. We would stop, then pick up, go across, and then do six fifty south from Offersville out to the county line, which Offersville got grant money last year, repaved all their streets, it looks really good. And also, Martin County got grant funds and did six fifty south from the county line ahead to Two Thirty-one, so.
Does that not quite get to the highway, then?
It gets all the way up. If we do this project from Two Fifty-seven to Two Thirty-one, it'll be brand-new asphalt.
So we get to Two Thirty-one still in Davis County, then?
Two Thirty-one's Martin County, but they just.
I'm saying, how big of a piece?
One mile.
One mile.
From thirteen hundred to twelve hundred, or whatever it is.
Okay.
Approximately.
That sounds good.
Total cost for that whole corridor I just mentioned, engineer's estimate again, one million, three twenty-one, one oh-three. And then our match, which would be above and beyond, you know, the grant is capped at a million dollars. If we put in for all, all of that, our match would be four seventy, four seventy-six, five forty-seven.
Seven, yeah.
Yeah, four seventy-six, five forty-seven would be our match. I wanted to make sure that's what the letter said, because I.
That's from NVH by Timonis, right? And NVH Road Improvement?
Correct.
Out of that budget.
You say four seventy-six?
Four seventy-six or four seventy-three?
Four seventy-three.
Yeah, I'd made an error, and I didn't change it on my sheet, but it's right on the letter. Four seventy-three, five forty-seven.
Okay. You made, you changed it since this letter, then?
Four seventy-three, is what it says on there.
No, this is since four seventy-six.
That's the one I gave him this morning.
I guess we need to make a correction on this, then.
Yeah.
Just find this. Yeah.
We can get you the right one after the meeting. I emailed a revision to Patty, apparently it didn't. Last night. But I renamed the file with REV one on the back of it, so you could tell the difference, but other than that. I'll go up and get you a copy, Michael, and bring it back.
Yes. What was the number again? Four seventy-three, right? Five forty-seven?
Yep.
Well, I mean, one thing that, you know, we focused on in the past five or six years in the county is connecting highway to highway. Anyway, up north, we, you know, we connected Fifty-seven to Two Thirty-one. Got, hopefully, we'll get Fifty-eight or whatever, Oden Highway is, down to One Hundred North, anyway. And then to get Two Fifty-seven to Two Thirty-one South, I think we're just really opening up the county, so. And then, plus, opening these up to Five Fifty-eight up at Crane and getting some of those roads up there improved. Looks like you did, did some good homework on that.
Thank you. You know, it's, the pavement condition is definitely improving in the county. Hopefully, our financing comes back, you know, our projections this year, we've made cuts. I don't know if, that's, the funding has been very competitive, I don't know if it still will be for the CCMG because of the lack of funding.
Funding, yeah.
We're fortunate that we've got some funding sources here that other counties don't have. Let me back up, too. All these would include striping and shoulderstone, adding that in there for safety, so.
I love the striping on Sportsman's Road.
They, so what, what roads are these in, twenty-foot?
So they vary. Glendale Road is twenty-two feet from Fifty-seven into Glendale, and then it reduces to twenty feet from there ahead. The Offersville, the Six Fifty South Road from Offersville to Two Thirty-one, it's nineteen and some change. We did find one spot that's down to eighteen over Culver Pipe that we're going to change.
Okay.
So hopefully, we can get it to be at least nineteen.
Be consistent across there, okay?
Yeah.
That sounds good. All right, I've got a letter of recommendation from the Commissioners to NDOT, an amount of four seventy-three, five forty-seven to be paid out of NVH by Timonis Material and NVH Road Improvement. Do you need the numbers off those? Patty?
If you have them, that's great.
Okay. The by Timonis Material would be one-one-seven, three-zero, five-three, one-two, three-one, zero-seven. And the NVH Road Improvement number would be one-one-seven, three-zero, five-three, two-four, seven-zero, zero-two. So look for a motion to approve this letter. Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart. Second by Ron Ronald, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three-zero. And once we make the change, I'll sign, sign the copy on that one.
Just an update on Nine Hundred East. All the trees, with the exception of three, are down on the ground, so we've, for that habitat requirement.
Thanks.
And surveying has been completed, marking the construction limits from Cantiberg to Two Hundred North. We've given notice to proceed to Davies County Real Water as well as REMC. Got the REMC contract back from NDOT last week. So that's all been taken care of. We should be seeing Davies County Real Water out there about the fifteenth of February is what they're projecting, starting their waterline relocation. All the documents have been turned in to NDOT, and we are on schedule for the March letting. All excellent news. Look forward to getting a contractor selected and seeing some dirt starting to get moved out there.
Better, yeah.
Our guess, we don't know at this time, the contractor always has the final say-so where they start, what their flow of work is, but we suspect they'll start between one hundred and two hundred. Reason being is because that's the waterline and powerline, that's where they're going to relocate first and get out of the way. Got the box culvert there.
That's two miles or a mile and something right there, right?
It's, it's right at a mile.
What, what's the entire project again?
Right at almost four, three point seven hours. I do have a couple of other things, too.
Yep.
Bridge Two Eighty-two, it's out on Clark Road between Highway Fifty and Cosby. Carries the traffic for the Purdue processing plant and the U B paving trucks, as well as a lot of OE traffic. But we replaced the bridge in twenty-twelve. ENH Bridge, provided the bridge package and installed it. Paul Williams Field with a grid deck on the bridge. Over the past few years since we've installed it, we were having trouble with the grid wanting to pop loose. We suspect because of the truck traffic. So our guys were out there continually welding that back down. Our bridge crew has been in contact with the ENH Bridge. Over the past few months, you've started to see some vertical cracking in the steel deck. For some odd reason, most of it's on the unloaded side of the traffic, so we're not sure what's causing it. Because most of it's on the northbound side, there's like thirty-eight cracks in the deck. ENH has been down and looked at it, they contacted me last week. They would like to replace the bridge free of charge. They would like to add a couple beams. The bridge itself that's there now, they would like to see it taken apart in three sections, pulled back to the shop. They want to do some testing and analysis on it. They're not quite sure what's caused that deck to do that. They're saying, basically, you know, there's no reason it shouldn't carry the loading that it's put under. So they're concerned about it, want to see why, what's happening, so.
They're going to replace the deck and the beams, the county would remove it and reinstall it.
That's my understanding is. Our bridge crew gave an estimate of a week, one-week timeframe to.
Get it apart and get it back together. So we'll have a roll closure there sometime.
Yes.
We do that, and then have to figure out a detour then for, which way do we go last time?
I believe we went down Cosby Road to the west, to the west, and then back out to Business Fifty, our national highway.
That's something we definitely need to look into.
Uh, yeah. I do commend our bridge crew, you know, for staying on top of that. I mean, they, they realized that it was coming loose, and they would periodically go back out there and re-weld it. But obviously, it's progressed. Nothing's going on.
Keep us up to date on that bridge, then?
We'll do. And then the other thing that we briefly brought up at the highway meeting was the ADA plan. I forget what year we did that now, but the ADA plan is, is really old. I would like to see us update that. Part of our requirements for NDOT, for community crossings, is for federal money. Our ADA transition plan and also our Title VI plan is to be continually brought and kept up to date. I don't know, Judy Toman with Lockmueller Group is retiring toward the end of the month. I think that's something that she could possibly do at a lower cost versus using an engineer like we did last time to develop the plan. And honestly, this should be simpler. I mean, she'll have to go to each of the buildings, including this new building.
Right.
Taking photographs and also, hopefully, Scott has kept record on the improvements that you guys have done over at the courthouse, the new ramp, the restrooms, all the things that have been done to fulfill our ADA commitment.
Right.
From the original plan.
Original plan, yeah.
Yeah. And those things can be checked pockets off, that they're done, and photographs taken and added to the new updated plan.
Guys, thoughts on maybe using Judy Toman to do that job part-time?
I'd get a number from her and see where to ask.
Yeah, I agree with Ron.
You think it's, she wanted just a number for that, or she wanted an hourly rate, or?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, because, I mean, we'll talk about a little bit more down on the CARES Act update, but a couple of the council members and I got together on that CARES Act money.
Right.
And the two thousand twenty-two income coming in from the states, obviously anticipated to be pretty low, whatever that means, or after the tax filings. But, so anyway, neither here nor there, but every dollar that we, that we expend this year is going to have to be just completely necessary, but they typically aren't, you know.
Right.
Yeah, I agree with Ron, get a number, approximate range, what we're, what we're talking about.
I don't have any issue hiring Judy at all, either.
I don't have any issue with the person, I don't have any issue with the project.
I know Judy will put her head down and work and get the job done. And it's something that we need to keep going with our proper other projects, too, so.
That's what I mean, every, every, on these applications, there's always questions. If we're, if we're meeting our ADA, do we have an ADA transmission, transition plan? Are we meeting it? Same thing with Title VI, you know, there's paperwork that's to be completed each year and things.
Yeah, I wouldn't say it had to occur, but we keep winning the federal funding, so. We're doing something right, so if we, if we need to do it to continue the success, perfect.
Yeah.
Correct. That's what it's not like, it's an unfunded mandate. I mean, it is, but it's not because of the amount of federal and state dollars we've brought in to our program, to our roads, you know. The ones you mentioned earlier, you know, all that was.
Right, yeah.
Seventy-five percent of it was anywhere, maybe a tick less, because we have, that's the other thing, too, to keep our applications additive, you know, we've typically funded a little bit more than is required of us, so.
All right. Anything else, Phil?
We have the meeting with, Grant's been setting up the meeting with IOSHA for the safety violations that we received from the accident back in September. Hopefully, early next week.
I sent an email out this morning, so we're still working on a date and a time, then, Grant?
Next week.
Next week, okay.
Two, two o'clock in the afternoon, one day next week.
Okay. All right.
What do you think about, our insurance company has a risk management guy. What do you think about maybe reaching out to him and seeing if he can assist with this?
Sure.
Okay.
That is one other thing, too. We did receive IPEP as our insurance provider, workers' comp and such. We received a grant, safety grant from them last year to buy backup slash dash cams for our big trucks. So the equipment's been purchased, we've installed about, not quite half of them. We should be seeing Paul Williams, they want to do a check presentation.
Yeah.
Do some, like a press release and things on them.
Is that for every, every truck you guys get out there?
Yeah, well, the dump trucks.
Right.
Trucks, yeah.
How many is that?
Hannah believes what we, that's what, I think we've got eleven trucks, one of them's a spare.
And how many cameras you got in now?
Four.
Four?
Yeah.
But your plan is to get all of them?
Yes. Yeah, we, we've got the, we've already got the equipment in, this is a matter of getting them scheduled. It takes about a day and a half to get them put in. Quite a bit of wiring and stuff that has to be ran. Accommodate, like the backup cameras, obviously in the back of the truck, so.
Sounds good. You guys have anything else for Phil? You have anything else, Phil?
I don't.
Maybe the audience has anything for Phil? Appreciate it, Phil.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep, I'll get that letter back down to you.
All right, sounds good. I want to back up to actually agenda, I had a number one, I forgot the minutes from the previous meeting. So we got minutes from Tuesday, January twelfth meeting, twenty-twenty-one. Is there any changes or anything anybody's seen?
No, no, I saw.
Ron, you seen it?
No.
All right, I look for a motion to approve.
Still move.
Motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Ronald, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three-zero. All right, next item on the agenda is twenty-twenty-one, if any voting system? Janice Williams? Morning, Janice.
Do you guys have a copy of everything?
Yeah.
Yes.
This is my microvote contract where they, they pay it every year for our voting machines. And it's a system annual maintenance agreement, it's in my budget. Like for unlimited software upgrades and anything they need to come and do as far as updating our machines to prepare us for the elections, which we don't have one this year, but sometimes they will do stuff.
Right, updates or whatever.
Updates and things like that throughout the year, so. I don't know of anything they're doing, you know, as of right now, that they're planning, but.
Okay. It's looks like everything's exactly the same that I've seen since I've been here.
Right.
Do we pay the same amount every year, regardless of there's an election or not?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's actually, it's been the same price since I've been there.
I think it's been the same price since I've been here since two thousand nine, so nothing's changed. You guys have any more questions for Janice on this contract for Microvote General Corporation?
I do not.
Look for a motion to approve a contract for Microvote General Corporation on those software upgrades for twelve thousand dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Ronald, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three-zero. Thanks, Janice.
Thank you. Do you have one there to sign?
I've got one to sign, you got, I can sign in if you got one.
The one, the original one that I have.
There you go. Thank you very much. All right. We got twenty-twenty year-end report, Sheriff Gary Allison. Morning, sir.
Morning. How's everybody today? Uh, yeah, we always turn in the year-end report to you all. Last year, we booked in one thousand fifty-six people, that's down about two hundred. And this is the jail, what I'm talking about here. Got the top ten arrests for twenty-twenty and twenty-nineteen.
That two hundred down, I mean, is that from just arrests here or COVID? Or is it from not transferring beds from different counties?
It's from COVID.
Okay.
We long-informed a lot of people back when they were at first, back in March, whenever they first say it, oh my God, COVID's going to do everything.
Right.
And we kind of suspended only arresting those that needed to be arrested. And then, of course, in.
Whereas before, you arrested people who didn't need to be arrested?
Like, like batteries.
I'm teasing, I'm kidding.
Simple, you know, fair to appear for driving while suspended, driving while suspended, those people usually come to jail. Weren't, but if you decide to go beating up on your wife, driving while drunk.
Right.
Burglaries, molestings, those still go on.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So, but we were down about two hundred. So, but we were down about two hundred from that. Got slapped pretty hard there in November, so we kind of, uh, slowed down again. And I'm still at the point of, uh, only arresting those serious, serious folks. If you remember right, we, uh, shut down our work release center. The judge agreed to that.
Right.
And all those folks are now on home detention. And had six or seven of those mess up, six or seven of them, and, and they come right back, you know? Pike County, they got hit, I think, two weeks ago. I talked to the sheriff down there and they let some low-level, non-risk offenders out. And the first thing one of them did was went and beat up the reporting persons. And he was a positive person inmate, so. We didn't let, we didn't let anybody out. We had seven in our jail from DOC. They kindly came and got them during crisis time. No county's brought anybody else to us during that time. We're taking some from Sullivan again. Because they're in a bad way overcrowding-wise. But, uh, during that time, we, uh, and then there was two or three that were eligible to go to home detention. They just got it a couple of weeks sooner. So, but it did wipe out my kitchen staff and we had to cater four thousand eight hundred, six hundred and eighty meals during that time. Got my kitchen staff and, uh, inmate workers.
How, how long was that timeframe?
Uh, right around Thanksgiving.
Okay.
Two weeks around Thanksgiving.
Are you guys pretty good over there right now with COVID?
Uh, we have no positive cases in the jail or staff right now.
Yeah.
Today.
Okay.
I think we've got about twenty percent of staff has gotten the vaccination. Uh, we've sent numbers into the state and they're gonna follow along the same guidelines. I think we've got two that's, uh, sixty and seventy. And the rest of them are all younger, all sixty, so. When that comes available, we'll get that done too, but sure that's not real high on the list.
Well, I know that the mandatory vaccinations obviously is very, um, negative, I guess.
Everybody tells, everybody tells me I can't mandate it.
Well, yeah, and I'm not suggesting that. The only thing I'm throwing out there is the vaccine is available. And, and as of April first or whatever the deadline is, the COVID eighty days of, of, of extra PTO or whatever.
Yeah.
Goes away.
Right.
So those, but if you get COVID in April, there's gonna be time off without pay, right?
You, you made it April.
Can't keep subsidizing.
You made it April. I was saying March first.
Well, whatever the date goes.
At least, at least, uh, have the first shot by March first.
Right.
Uh, but I, some people believe Facebook. I don't know.
There's three-week timeframe between.
Couldn't get it to me quick enough.
It's a third, basically thirty days and ten days after your last shot. So I mean, you, you gotta get rolling.
Rolling on it if you're gonna get it done.
Uh, yeah, yeah. And we put it out quite often and we tell our folks you need to be.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure we're clear with all the department heads. Come April, when you come to us saying, hey, my peak folks need more PTO time because of COVID, we're gonna say.
No.
Or at least I'm gonna say, look, you've had three months to get vaccinated and you chose not to, so now you gotta deal with the concept.
I don't know what the plan is if they get vaccinated and then they get COVID sick. I don't know.
That's definitely a different category.
Yeah, it's something else. Some other bridge we'll probably have to cross.
Right.
Okay.
Transports were down. Uh, last year we drove twenty thousand miles. The year before we drove fifty using, uh, Zoom and some other uh, court-type hearing things. Judge Sabecky will only do those for initial hearings. Any other hearing, he wants them in their courtroom. Court cases have been down somewhat, but they are still operating.
And that's a personal choice that each judge can make?
My opinion, yeah. Judge says.
Yeah, which is fine. I'm just curious. I just didn't know.
Judge, judge says that ha, he can only do initials. I think the places are doing them, but.
Gotcha.
It's, I don't question him.
Nope.
Mm-hmm. Smart.
We did add the, uh, LED lighting, the UV lighting to the air ducts, so.
You guys have the, did you guys get the portable UV lights?
No, I didn't. I didn't get that.
Okay. I don't remember what happened.
If you're ready for the long story on that. We have a company that deals with a lot of sheriff's offices and they had one of those units for sale for forty-five thousand. And doing homework on the system itself, I called the place where they're manufacturing. And they're actually manufactured up in Lebanon, Inver County. And I talked to one of the engineers and he said they're great for surgery rooms. But I explained to him my situation and they, I'd have three. And then, you know, whenever you start having to move people around and people can't be in there and, uh, then I asked him what he was selling them for. And he was selling them for fifteen thousand. Uh, I said, okay. First off, it don't sound like it's gonna work.
Yeah, right.
So.
So you're trading through the air, your air system, air handler system then?
Yeah. I've got it like that. Uh, we're getting ready to switch phone systems. Uh, RTC should be here anytime in the December, January. Uh, they notified me yesterday that I was gonna have to get, not yesterday, day before, Friday. I was gonna have to get, uh, another internet line coming into my building, ninety-nine dollars a month that I was not expecting. If it goes down, I gotta be able to bounce to another system. I can't go without.
Right.
Right? So that was not ever brought up to me before until Friday.
So is RTC gonna, are they installing a line for your charge or just as long as we sign the contract, ninety-nine dollars a month for that one line, they'll install it?
Think that's the way, if I'm remembering right off the top of my head.
Hey. Guys, you got any questions on that?
Um, well, probably a dumb question. Uh, Jeff is the one overseeing this? Is that, is that?
Yeah.
Jeff and Dale probably.
Dale's the one overseeing. That's who I contact.
Yeah, no offense, but at, at work, when I hear a director say I'm overseeing an IT project, I get a little nervous, so as long as your IT, I means Jeff, that's perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jeff and Dale, uh, they done that. So, uh, one thing that did, it's back here, you know, on the dispatch and sheriff side. Unless you have any more questions about the jail. Water heater blower just went out last week. We got that fixed. Or any other? We had, we had to get a new dishwasher. It was twenty-four thousand.
The roof you're talking about is over your main office building? The pitched roof, right?
Pitched roof.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had some prices, but, and I don't think we've gotten around to that yet.
Okay. Everything else going?
Yeah, we put a metal shingle on, on that building. It's like a hundred-year shingle.
Yeah, if, if we can do that, it'd be great.
Yeah.
Not to worry about it.
Yeah, if you, if you get time, I know you've been busy with everything else going on, but if you can't give us a quote back on something like that, yeah.
Wasn't Graver Post the contractor on that?
Graver Post, uh, contracted, subbed it out to Tony Hahn down in Accord and, and it was like one forty, I think is what we paid for then.
Take a lifetime roof out of it, just about, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's incredible.
And that's, that would be the better way to go. So twenty years, now they're not.
Yeah.
Doing the same project again. Uh, sheriff's side, we received fifteen thousand three hundred and fifty-five calls last year. That's up somewhat for our EMS runs practically doubled. That's, uh, because they call us when they need. That's for, if the hospital needs an ambulance, they call us too, so.
Does that make sense?
It's a record-keeping thing.
Have you always done that?
No, we just, time we've done.
It just seems like an extra step to me for some reason.
We're, we're making through it. Uh, again, our total miles driven was down twenty, twenty-two thousand, and that's because as far ago, crashes are on, uh, transports. Hand gun, uh, handgun permits went through the roof, uh, three eighty-three, that up from one forty-nine. That's due to the climate that we're in currently. Uh, uh, we are, Nathan and I are gonna get together and talk about central dispatch sometime coming up. Shortly in the near future. I'm not sure when. You and I are gonna sit down and talk about.
Yeah, try to talk about.
Security things in the courthouse.
And then, uh, evacuation routes and stuff with this building. Yeah, get a plan together.
Get something together on that. Our fleet, our cars are in pretty good shape. Doing pretty good there. I did buy the jail a van, so then we'll put a partition in so dealers can transport. It's easier. Stress of having them there with them right beside.
I got them, yeah. All right, sounds good.
Oh, no, I think we're doing real good.
Okay, just one question. Back on the calls, it looks like everything has been down except your EMS and your scams. Is that all due to COVID?
Scams? Ah, scams went up.
Right. I'm saying scams and EMS were the only ones that went up. Everything else went down.
Uh, yeah, probably.
COVID, you think, just less activity?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we got hit scam-wise. It, it's a, it's a daily thing. Uh, we actually had one where, uh, they were calling people in the county saying that they were Sheriff Gary Allison and uh, send money right away or they were using me. So I haven't had that before, but we get a scam call practically every day and, you know, people call them like, you need to get it in the news media. You need to get it out. And it's like, it's out there every day. So. Pretty ridiculous. And when you start tracing numbers back, they usually go to Jamaica, Canada, or Africa. People just need to stop believing. Yeah, I don't think we had a whole lot of money lost due to scams.
Just the aggravation of the phone call?
Just the aggravation for the, for the people. And even our Dale's got hit. Here recently, we're working on the, his credit card information showed up on someone else's bill saying Davies County IT Department. Hundred and thirty-seven charged, what, five times? So we're looking into that. She's not very happy. She's a Knox County resident. Jeez. Happy about it. We didn't do it.
Yeah.
Our guys didn't do it. It's just one of those hit somewhere.
Yeah, it happens to everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, sounds good. Anything else, guys?
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Morning.
Good morning.
How you doing this morning, sir?
Good morning, Keith.
Keith Miller with Davies Community Hospital. Here to give the twenty twenty year-end EMS report. So twenty twenty was the first calendar year, uh, that we provided EMS service. Midst of a pandemic, so. Um, I thought I would go over some stats. I think, um, that's worth talking about for the, for the audience. Um, in two thousand twenty, we made four thousand one hundred ninety-nine, uh, ambulance responses throughout the county. Of that four thousand one hundred ninety-nine, um, three thousand seventy-nine of those were performed by the two Washington bases. The Odin base responded to five hundred eighty-six of those runs. And the new station in Cantleburg responded to five hundred thirty-four. Obviously, a bulk of the runs occur in the population density center plus where the, the hospital is located. A little bit similar to what, uh, Sheriff Allison experienced through the spring and the summer months. Um, oddly enough, when, when we shut the economy down and we shut, um, a lot of things down, folks also, uh, were hesitant to call for ambulances. We saw a significant voli, volume decrease from March through most of June, um, which, which did bring those numbers down, uh, for the year. Our non-transport cases, uh, are of non-concern. We've been monitoring those. That's folks who call for an ambulance, but we don't end up transporting. So somebody changed their mind, maybe there's not a patient on site, somebody else called out of concern, or a patient who is deceased. Um, those are running around twenty-five percent on average. We spot-checked those with other neighboring counties. And a lot of counties are running thirty, thirty-five, uh, percent for the non-transport. That's one thing that, that we do monitor. From a financial standpoint, um, for calendar year twenty, we had three million seven hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred and sixty dollars in gross revenue. So those are the, our charges that, that we bill out. County subsidy of five hundred ninety-five thousand. Revenue deductions, so these are contractual allowance with insurance payers, uh, bad debt and charity write-offs. In total, came out to two million ninety-five thousand and eighty-seven dollars. And brought us to a net revenue of two million two hundred seventeen thousand four sev, uh, seventy-three. Our total operational expenses were two million six hundred sixty-five thousand four hundred ninety-five, which brought us to, uh, net loss for the year of four hundred forty-eight thousand twenty-two dollars. Some of the, some of the things as we, uh, reviewed the financials for the year, um, obviously that, that volume slump that we experienced through the months of March, April, May, and most of June, uh, really changed that top line. Uh, there's, we continue to find opportunities in the revenue cycle, so that's the charges that we send out, the contracts that we have with payers. Some of that's documentation. Some of it is, um, just speeding up the revenue collection side. Uh, there's opportunities there. Um, there's also additional revenue streams that we're looking at for two thousand twenty-one, obviously. When we started mid-nineteen, July fifteenth of nineteen, our first and foremost focus was to cover the contractual obligations for the county. So focusing on making sure we were there for those nine-one-one calls. Um, two thousand twenty came in and shortly thereafter the new year brought us a, a pandemic where, you know, we, we dealt with volume losses. We dealt with, uh, staff, you know, being in quarantine or contracting the virus unfortunately. And so suffered through some staffing challenges. Um, you know, we're coming, we're coming out of that now. I think we've, I think we've got a stronger team than what we've had since July of nineteen, so, um, we are looking at additional, uh, non-emergent revenue sources in two thousand twenty-one to, to help bring up that, that top-line revenue.
Guys, back to full staff now then?
Um, we have, I'm interviewing a gentleman, um, at eleven o'clock today for one of the open full-time paramedic positions. If he's a good candidate and we place him, that'll bring us to one full-time paramedic that we still have to fill. Other than that, we've, we've done a lot of, uh, hard work recruiting, uh, really beat the bushes and put attractive packages out there to recruit folks. One, one of our new paramedics starts February twenty-second. Um, he's actually coming from South Carolina to be closer to some family and friends. We're able to recruit him. Got a good staff, good mix of local folks and folks that we've attracted from neighboring counties to come.
And you have or will?
To close the hospital's twenty twenty financials, I just got the clean version of this yesterday. Brought hard copies. I'll leave this hard copy with Patty and then as soon as I get back to the office, I'll, I'll get an electronic copy.
All right.
So.
Good. Anything else, Nathan?
No, the only thing I would suggest, obviously two thousand twenty is a unique year. Uh, perhaps once we get to, uh, third quarter, um, August, September, if you see you guys are running a negative, um, I, I would highly suggest reaching out to the commissioners sooner than later at that. I, I definitely anticipate these numbers to improve fairly substantially.
We do too. You know, like I said, this is, this is not what any of us wanted.
Sure.
Um, but, you know, so we're paying close attention, week by week, month by month, for, for what it's worth, the, uh, the month of December. But, you know, so we're paying close attention, week by week, month by month, for, for what it's worth, the, uh, the month of December, uh, you know, the service nearly broke itself even, so, you know, we have... Come a long way since, uh...
Making progress.
Yeah, the middle part of the year, yeah.
Yeah. I, I've received no complaints from any constituents as far as the quality of the service, um, anything like that. Uh, it's nice seeing the new trucks running around. It, it's a good, uh, it's a good, a PR message, right, for the community? So a lot of positives, so let's keep it up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
Anybody have any other questions?
Anybody in the audience have anything for him?
Cool.
Alright, that counts, yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. Alright, back on the agenda, uh, resolution twenty-twenty-one dash one, transfer funds to, and establish additional processing. Processes regarding the CARES Act funding, and I know you, Nathan, you did some work on this.
Yeah, so, uh, last commissioners meeting, we, we took that CARES Act money, we put it over the rainy day fund, and then we just wanted to make sure we had a process in place to make sure the right money is used at the right time, uh, for the right things. So, uh, Tony Dungeon, Matt Meredith, myself, Patty Paul, and I think Sheriff Allison, uh, joined us last Friday. And, uh, basically, um, and Patty, obviously, her recollection is much shorter than mine sometimes, but the, the overall point that the, uh, council, um, um, made was that, um, we want to create a process where there's basically like a, if you want to sub- if you're planning on submitting an expense for eventual COVID CARES Act dollar, uh, dispersment, there needs to be, you need to fill out a form, and then there's gonna be some questions on that form that says, i- is this a budgeted line item already in my budget? Uh, do I have any extra money in my budget? Um, because we want to use those CARES Act dollars as an absolute last resort, and we don't want, not that any department head would, we don't want them start pigeonholing expenses and, and revenue. So that, uh, the message the council wanted, wants us to get, and we agreed, is that, uh, this, use this form, the form would then go to the commissioners to say, is this, is this a valid COVID, uh, expense? Then we would approve it, but you would go ahead and pay it out of your existing budget. Then it, towards the end of the year, if we see that your existing budget is running short of money and you're gonna run out of money, then you come back at the end of the year and say, hey, look, I had a hundred thousand of COVID dollars. I'm fifty thousand short. Can you reappropriate fifty thousand back to me? But the hope is, is that your existing budget will be able to fund those expenses and will to save those rainy day dollars until next budget cycle. And once we see what the, uh, state income tax and all that stuff's gonna come in at, so basically, um, it was, use the money as a last, last, last resort. Use your existing budget if you possibly can. If you cannot use your existing budget dollars, then you, then you can come and make a request to the council. But the council's gonna wanna see that form completed by the commissioners that before you made the expense, you came to the commissioners and said, look, here's, I'm gonna spend a hundred grand. And then, you know, that, right, because we don't want them to say, hey, I already, I already have the thing and now I need the money.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, that was kinda choppy, but basically, uh, we ideally will want that CARES Act money to be there for next budget cycle. Uh, but if you absolutely have to have it, it will be there, but there'll be a process you need to do for procurement. So, there's gonna be a basic form that, uh, we're gonna work on, that we're gonna mirror one of the other forms. So we'll go to the commissioners first, we'll try to screen them, and then...
Send them on the council.
Send them onto the council, so.
I don't have any issues with it at all.
Patty, did I butcher that too bad?
Not too bad. Resolution twenty twenty-one, also, the key part of that resolution is the authorization to move that money, uh, to rainy day.
Right.
That's a big component of that resolution.
So it looks like the council has already approved it, they're all signed here on that. Do, do we need to come back to the commissioners then for that form? For the commissioners to have, or just?
We're working on that form. Um, Nathan and I are meeting, um, we'll just draft out a form. It's probably gonna follow what IFA had.
Alright.
Um, and then I'll have some guidelines with it. That's in the works. This resolution...
Bring it back to the next commission meeting and...
Yeah, we're gonna meet next week, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Any more questions or comments, Ron?
Sound good.
Alright. I guess I'll look for a motion to approve res- resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one, resolution to transfer funds and establish additional processes regarding the CARES Act funding.
I'll move. I'll second.
I got a motion by Ron Arnold, second by Nathan Gabhart. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Ron, I have started using blue pens. I already got a new health board, got this on there.
Kathy's, um, tied up with the clinic right now. You have any questions if I can't address them or, like, said I'm supposed to give her a call?
I don't remember. Was that in our packet? Cause I had it on my email.
Yeah, it was, uh, me and the ash was, was no longer able to serve, so they, um...
What was the other name?
Mark Arnold, I believe.
Uh, Mark Arnold, yeah.
Mark Arnold, alright. Alright, anybody have any questions about Mark Arnold serving in that capacity?
No relation, by the way.
Alright. Look for a motion to accept Mark Arnold's appointment to, uh, the board of health appointment.
I'll move.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arnold. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Alright, next on agenda, Byron Sanders, project management consultant. I'd actually reach out to Byron to, uh, do an audit on, on this building, just to go through what happened, what was good, what happened that was bad, and try to bring a resolution to it. And then also, we're getting ready to start the, uh, courthouse project over there, and, uh, just make sure we got all of our I's dotted and our T's crossed to move on with that project, and he's gonna help us out with that. He's got a seventy-five dollar hourly rate and, uh, and then not to exceed the seventy-five hundred to ten thousand dollars to, uh, do this audit on the, on the, uh, Davies County Government Center. Anybody have any questions on that? I sent this, I forgot to send this out to Nathan, so I did get, get him the, uh, paperwork, but, uh, any more questions on that, Nathan?
No, I, I read through it, and obviously, I mean, in, in, in the private sector, we do the root cause analysis, autopsies, whatever you wanna call them, um, after projects, um, but they're typically on projects we do often so that we can learn.
Right.
And, um, the only thoughts that came to my mind when I read the letter is that, you know, uh, being the owner operators and going through it, you, you learn, you know, a ton of stuff. So, um, and the project lasted, I think I came in in fifteen, uh, holy Thursday of two thousand and fourteen's when they did the public study or public meeting. So, I, um, the theory, the theory is good. It definitely is not gonna hurt anything. The only concerns I had was one is just the, the eight-year timeframe that, that this thing covered.
I don't know if we're gonna go back that far on timeframe. I think we're just going for, from, uh, signing the contracts till finish of this building, so we're probably maybe a three-year timeframe.
And as long as the auditor's office, um, I mean, we do financial audits and so forth at, at my company, and, um, you know, I know we, we, I, I have knowingly, knowingly put hundreds of hours of work on my team by going through this, so... As long as, um, as long as there's a clear-cut why behind it and a clear-cut timeframe and that we have the resources to do it, um, you know, I, it's, it's definitely not a bad thing.
Yeah.
But, um, so yeah, I mean, it's, if you're passionate about it, we can, I, I'm, I'm not against it, I'm not overly for it, so I can, I can go along.
I just think something, you know, as difficult as the job was to finish, I think we just need to know why and how it happened and, and, uh, try to move forward with it so when we don't have the same exact thing happen over here on the courthouse when we get ready to start it. So, Ron, do you have anything on this?
Any project of this size is a complex project, and there's not anything that we attacked that we couldn't do better at the end of the day. And I think we'll end up with some information that will save us more than his fee that he's charging on the courthouse project, so I'd certainly be in favor of it.
This is a seven-point-nine million dollar project, and courthouse is gonna be right up there with that too, so it's...
Yeah, the courthouse definitely be more. Um, and again, it, it, it's, it's, we're all in small dollars, but, uh...
Yeah.
The courthouse is a little bit more of a cookie cutter, you know, cause there's a lot of courthouses that have been remodeled, a lot more oversight there, so... So, if we have the money and the budget, and, um, I mean, I think there could be some good learning things, we can...
I'd like to take this out of the commissioners consulting budget.
Okay.
Patty, I don't know what number that, I don't have my...
I'll look it up.
It's, uh, thirty-one thousand, three-one-six-zero-zero?
Thirty-one... Eighty-eight thousand left in it, it looks like.
Alright, so if everybody's, anybody, anything else on Byron Sanders' audit? If not, look for a motion to, uh, approve and then pay for his fees out of line item thirty-one-six-hundred?
Still moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arnold. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Alright, we got UMR, UMR COVID cost share waiver, and that runs until...
That's an extension of, uh, previously with the COVID, uh, the commissioners had opted a plan for
Right.
the employees' benefits, and this is just extending it, and we had to respond on that. This is just part of the official record.
Just for a motion on that. So that is, gets extended until April twentieth of two thousand twenty-one, which will be applied to the UMR standard benefit option. Anything else on that, Nathan?
Uh, no, the only thing I would just continue to reiterate to, uh, to our team here in Davies County is, uh, you know, many of you have access to the vaccine. It's going to be at no cost to you, um, until April. Give us some deep consideration, do what you feel is best. Like, come April, May, this stuff's gonna be, starting to be out of pocket.
Right.
And I just don't wanna have someone in here breaking down that they can't afford to be off work, and they've had three months to, I'm just trying to prevent as many of those conversations.
Writings in the future, yeah.
This is a really good thing that the commissioners are doing.
Yeah. Anybody out here in the audience have anything on that? I'll look for a motion to approve the extension of the, uh, UMR COVID cost share waiver till, to April twentieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Still moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arnold. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Alright. Twenty twenty-one Westgate appointment.
I had requested a delay in that appointment at the last meeting, and I would like to request another delay till the next meeting. Uh, there's some moving parts to that. And I wanted to understand, stood that the people involved at Westgate now are very well-qualified, and I think they're doing a good job. What I am looking at is the course of the park and the direction. It's kinda like when you play basketball, you don't, uh, always keep your leading scorer in all the time if you have a certain need at a certain time. And so I'd like a little more time to run a few more traps before I'm ready to act on that.
Alright. Nathan, you got anything on that, on that?
Well, uh, uh, again, there's definitely a lot of questions at Westgate. I think this is gonna lead to some great conversations so that we can all be on the same page on what the game plan is up there. Um, the reality of this is, though, I mean, we've got three appointees who serve at the pleasure of the commissioners. We can replace those appointees anytime that we, we choose. In November, uh, we all take, uh, the board list and divide them amongst the commissioners. So these were on my list, so I'd reached out to the appointees, um, let them know kinda the landscape of what we need to know going forward, included Bryant Niehoff. And, um, cause we've gotta get the commissioners, um, educated on what's going on up there so that we can help lead. Cause the changes, you know, do need to be made. We're at a nice crossroad. So, uh, currently, current state is, is that, um, you know, as of January, our appointees, we just kinda left, one of the appointees, we just left there, the other two is not expired yet. They've been re- they've been elected as officers now, so, um, what I feel we should do is that we should, Natalie Smith was the appointee. I think we need to go ahead and re- reappoint her, uh, because again, she's currently serving, um, an unappointed term, so to speak. She, she is an officer up there. And, um, once we get the update from the summit in February or March, if we see we need to go a different direction, I have no question, I have no, uh, reservation at all. If everyone agrees, if we need to reappoint three new board members, I have no issue with that as long as we all know why. But, um, I, I think we need to go ahead and just reappoint Natalie, cause we can change it, and nothing against, and no one's saying anything that Natalie's not the problem with, you know... We're not saying any of these appointees are the problem, but, um, so, to me, if, if, if it was up to me, we'd re- just reappoint Natalie. Get, everyone get updated in February, March, whenever the summit's going to occur. And then the other, all the board members have agreed, look, if there's better people to serve who can lead this mission, we'll all stop, we'll, we'll all step aside, so...
The other two appointments, just, do we know when the other two appointments are?
Yeah, uh, next year and the year after, um, so twenty...
Twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
But, um, but again, you know, they're, they're all agreeable that, uh, if there's other folks who wanna step up, I just said, I, I don't have enough information to say who should serve, who shouldn't serve, who shouldn't serve, so I'm, I'm excited about the summit.
That's in March?
I'd say in the next few weeks, next month or so is what Bryant had mentioned, so, um, if we reappoint Natalie, it's not like we can't make different, um, decisions, and... So, I, I would, I would suggest we move forward, but I'm not gonna be mad either way.
Yeah.
Well, with Natalie, and I was the one that recommended Natalie originally to serve on the board in my previous position. I think she's done a good job. I've had a conversation with Natalie. There's some moving parts as far as the length of terms, and I would request we delay it till the next meeting.
Um, what about, you have any?
It's my understanding that she still serves till somebody's appointed, so she is on the board. And then I spoke with Rick Hall, I think, the attorney for the Commissioners Association. It's not a good idea to appoint someone and then take them off, and it depends on how the bylaws of the organization are written, which I haven't checked into yet. But unless there's cause, then you may run into some issues there, so I, I think it's just cleaner for we wait till the next meeting.
I mean, we're just talking about a few weeks here.
We are. At, at the last commissioners meeting, when we delayed this, cause this, and, and just in the hindsight, this all should've been approved in December, it was just an oversight.
Right.
Right, cause all the terms expired twelve-thirty-one.
Twenty-eight, right.
So, it was just an oversight. So, at the last meeting when we tabled it, I was like, that's fine, as long as something's being done behind the scenes, but now we're just, this is the second time we're tabling it. So, I think we need to move forward. However, I'm not gonna be mad if you two vote to table it, you two can vote to table it. But, uh, someone needs to be getting something done so that we can get these folks reappointed, or new people appointed, cause it's very hard to find people to willing to serve, so...
Good people, yeah, willing to, yeah, I do understand it.
We're sending a bad message to the public by leaving these people dang, dangled out there.
Well, we got, the other two appointments are there though already, right? Pointing the ones that's for twenty twenty-two.
They are, cause they haven't been on the...
On the, on the, on the reappointment list.
They're, they're on their current.
So we're down just, just to the one, which is Natalie Smith.
Right.
On the, uh, but she's still serving currently.
She is still there, and she's on some, got elected some, something, something, I forget what her title is, but...
Whether we table it now or, or move forward and wait till the summit in March, or do you, you think it's in the February first of March?
At, at the RDC meeting, Bryant said it's in the next, in the next few weeks to month is what, is what I thought he had said, so... I told Natalie that we need to be updated by March at the latest, or we, we need to start going some different directions, so, yeah. So, yeah, like I said, I'm not, I'm gonna be mad either way. You, you two can decide.
You think, uh, if we table it two weeks, you'd have, you'd have an answer what you want to do right then?
I will guarantee you, in two weeks, we'll have a answer to the questions. I've talked personally with Diane, I've talked personally with Natalie, uh, I know someone has talked to Darla, and everybody's in agreement, they want a situation that's best for Davies County to move their interest forward. So I think, yeah, two weeks, we could put it to bed at the next meeting.
Alright. I don't like tabling things either, but I get stuck in the crosshairs, which is fine. Uh. Do I have a motion from either one of you then?
I'll make a motion to table it till the next meeting.
I got a motion by Ron to table it till the next meeting. That's, that's Natalie Smith's appointment to the uh, Westgate authority.
I'll go ahead and abstain, but again, it's.
Okay.
Go ahead and move forward.
I got Ron, Ron's gonna motion, Nathan's gonna abstain, and I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries two one. Alright, on the charitable donations. For the county, and I know we've done this back when we've done our budget adoptions. Ron, you weren't there, but. I had to these figures up last night and I got over, it was over our budgeted amount. Um, I don't know if we left one of these out of our, when we done our figuring. It was, is either an animal shelter or historical society, or if we just want to cut that back or something, because I came up with like a hundred and thirty eight thousand on these totals.
Yeah, the animal, animal was thirty five, right?
Thirty five thousand, right.
And then historical society, what did you, oh, here it is.
Fifty thousand, yeah, here's the.
I got it here, I'm sorry.
You got it.
I'm just pulling it up here.
Well, I just went down what we approved was here, right? This is the request, this is the approved. And I figured up, I might have to figure this up again real quick. We done it last night.
You're, you're over a hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah.
On the requested amount.
Yeah, we're a hundred and forty eight thousand nine hundred.
Yeah, because the red, looks like one requested forty five thousand when we had traditionally nineteen thousand, so.
But this is what we, that's where we had approved.
Mm-hmm.
Our budget. That's where we stand at up there, so. I don't know if we didn't count an animal shelter or historical society on that figure or not, I don't remember. Looks like we're twenty thousand nine hundred dollars over. So one of those line items, we've, we've left out somewhere when we was doing our budget, budget hearings.
Okay, so we.
We have two options, um, as far as uh, adjusting the award amounts or asking for an additional appropriation to council. Those would be your options.
I was trying to keep all that in, in under a hundred and twenty thousand and I don't know which one got left out when we was talking to Budget Times.
There were several that was delayed, uh, still trying to implement a cleaner process for the agencies and commissioners. So this is just part of the ongoing proactive procedures, but.
Have you had any more discussions with historical society?
Um, it's been, it's not been anything, anything recent. I think we took them from eighty down to fifty.
And we was comfortable leaving them there for a year.
And we're, well, we're gonna leave them, we're gonna flatline them at fifty for um. I think, I think the agreement was we're gonna, it is flatline, flatline them at fifty.
Fifty, yeah.
And then um, you know, reevaluate it down the road, but um, I think fifty is what they have in their, in their budget. So based off your, your numbers, could you give me those numbers again, Michael, so I can, one forty eight?
One forty eight nine is the total what we approved.
So we approved that.
One forty eight nine.
Okay.
But up here, we'd, we'd ask to keep it under a hundred and twenty, so at least I just want it to be kept under. If we're gonna keep all those options in there and not change anything and not deduct anything that we've been given.
Mm-hmm.
That number's probably not to go to one fifty.
Mm-hmm.
Keep it under that.
Mm-hmm. Um, because yeah, year over year increase, I mean, we kept everyone flat.
Everything's been flat for the last several years.
For a while, so it's, you know, I, I know everyone has some inflationary costs, but uh, at some point, there's still only, limited amount of charitable giving we can do here. But if the, if the original number, the past numbers.
I think what happened, I think we, we'd actually left the animal shelter. We talked about it, but I don't think we realized that was in the same line item.
Yeah, because, yeah, I mean, yeah, that's a good point, because the animal shelters, that's not a charitable giving, that's a cost share for a service that they're hoping with the county.
Right.
So I think we do, we move that one thirty five off and that should be.
Uh, bounce it back to.
Your one twenty should be, is the charitable money that we're just giving away to the five oh one C threes and then the thirty five is for an actual service that's being provided for the tax, so.
And I believe that is a contract.
It is a contract, yeah. Okay, so.
I'd define leaving animal shelters as a contract amount of thirty five thousand.
Yes.
And then everything else that we've appropriated for our, our budget for twenty twenty one.
Yes.
Or the request from twenty twenty is, and then that should, whatever that number comes up to, tell you what it is.
One, one, yeah, one thirteen nine maybe.
Yeah, one thirteen nine total, that's without.
Yeah, that makes more sense, because I know we were.
We left some money there for stuff to grow a little bit. Are you?
Yeah.
There's bud.
No, it sounds good. You know, you talk about charitable contributions, did not all these move to contract?
Well, that, that, that would be wonderful, in my opinion. The past three or four years, we made a ton of progress, that's getting this um, this event. That, that, this is a meeting during the summer that we're always are like, you know, glad that they come, but uh.
So um, this is a little bit of communication and definitions, but these are somewhat in the scope of being a contract. There are agreements. And the paperwork that you have there, they, they send those requests to us through a standardized form. And then um, it is a charitable, because it's not really for a service for the county, so. Um, it's an agreement, but it's not a contract for services to the county, so that's a difference. Uh, it may be splitting hairs, but, and then because of their status and that we are giving them money from the county, there's also another uh, requirement. And we have to notify them, and so this process is doing that as well, because they have an obligation when the county gets, uh, gives them or disperses money. They have an obligation to report it on gateway to the state, and so that's all included in this process we're trying to develop. So while it may seem easier to do a contract in like, like, we're just talking about that, it is a little bit different.
My question would be, is it just terminology, because I think every one of these organizations provide a service to the county.
Yes, but it's not a, it's a, uh. I'm not sure how to address that uh, today. I will look into it and get back with each of you.
Well, that's probably something should be handled during the budget, shouldn't it?
Well, that's true, we can move forward on that. Historically, there's been a lot of assumptions made and a lot of expectations that have just rolled over. And again, with leadership trying to establish procedures and.
Yeah.
We're open to talk about those changes that you want.
Reason we, we went to the one twenty budget on that, Ron, is just because every year is just more and more uh, asking for more money, more people showing up to ask for the money. And if we put a one twenty cap on that, then.
Where we're gonna come from?
Where, where's it gonna come from? Are we gonna take it from somebody else?
Trying to control.
Control it a little bit.
I think to Ron's point, during the next budget cycle, maybe what we can do in these agreements that we have, where we say we're gonna give you five thousand dollars, just list the scope of services on that agreement. It's not a contract, but just says, hey, for five thousand dollars, here's the services we're providing for the county. And then that allows us next year to reflect back and say, okay, did you provide these services and just give us.
They do have to ask, they, they do have to request for stuff, so they could, they'd be part of that, that goes out, I guess. That we could work on around budget time on that. So Patty, if, if. I don't want to make this confusing, but we did budget one twenty for the charitable donations and then if we pull animal shelter out there, is, is that on a separate line item, an animal shelter still?
That, that would be, yes, uh, we can make that.
Animal shelter is on a separate.
Make that work, we can, um, that is a contract, it's an agreement with the city.
I'd like to, personally, we'd like to pull that out, pull you out for charitable donations. That brings the other charitable donations to one, one hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and we've got budgeted a hundred and twenty.
So today, the request is just for you to note on those organizations, what you are authorizing us to disperse for them for twenty twenty one out of your budget.
Any more questions or comments on the budget for the charitable donations?
No, thank you.
Okay, I would like to see a motion to have animal shelter pulled out of the charitable donations and put back on their regular line item with their contract with the city for thirty five thousand. And then each and every one of these other charitable donations for four H Building Maintenance Fund, Senior Services, R S V P, Historical Society, Red Door and Four Rivers. Connections and Ride Solutions, which comes up a total of one hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars to be approved for payment for, for twenty twenty one.
It's still moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gavhart.
Second.
Second by Ron, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Thank you.
While you're signing those papers, I will say that the auditor's office appreciates the commissioners in trying to help streamline um, this procedures for this instance. It sure makes it uh, more efficient and we've come quite a ways from several years ago as far as the organization of it. And we'll continue to streamline it and make the process much simpler and transparent.
Others that might mention, do we not have an agreement or making charitable contribution, have an agreement?
Yes, the document is an agreement, so, and again, that's why I said it may be splitting hairs on an agreement versus a contract and the expectations, but we can check into that a little bit further.
Alright, next on the agenda is vending machine proposal for the government center. I'd ask Rodney to reach out to a vending company to see about getting vending machines for the, for this building. Um, we got two different options. Did you guys have, just read that in your packet?
Yep.
Okay. Um, what's your guys' thoughts on the option? We got, option one is a one combination machine with eighteen to twenty snack and candy selections and eight to ten beverage selections. But the only on this one, the beverage selections will vary as each selection will only hold five items at a time. Or, which is, may be fine, may not be fine, I don't know. Um, second option is one snack machine with twenty eight selections, one beverage machine with eight to nine selections. And of course, it'll hold a lot, a lot more volume. It's cradle vending out of Jasper, um, there's no cost to the county. And there's pricing for cans, bottles, ships of what they would charge on that machine. It is a cashless system. And uh. They do pay sales tax quarterly on that too, so just get your guys' thoughts on that. If uh, if you guys want to do something like that, or if uh, if you do, what, what option do you guys look for?
Um, I mean, as a, as a, as a non-junk food type of person, I mean, but obviously, but I don't expect people to.
I don't think anybody's gonna.
Eat weeds and seeds all day, but.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's gonna go down and use that for their lunch every day, but you know, it just, I know we had the option in the courthouse, I think they still do.
Sure.
People didn't use it.
I don't have any problem with it.
So.
Let the buyer beware.
Yeah. It just, vendor movement.
It needs to be convenient for you, I, I get it.
There will be water in it, Nathan.
Yeah, we, we definitely have water selection there too, so.
Um, I'm kidding, I'm, I'm gonna get on my soapbox.
Alright.
Any options sound good to you down there?
Where would be located?
In the basement. We got room down there for one or two machines.
Take the steps?
Take steps to get it. So, to get it.
Make that a requirement.
Requirement.
Shoot.
So.
Yeah, yeah, I find they need it.
I would prefer, I mean, myself, I would probably prefer option two for a while, and if it doesn't pan out where they're making huge uh. Sales on the soda or whatever they're selling, water, whatever it is, that'd be moving back to maybe the combination one, but.
You got plenty of space?
I think we got plenty of space for two. I think Rodney said there's plenty of space for two, so.
Yeah, I have no issue with either one of them.
Okay. I'll make a motion then, um, nah, you gotta make a motion, I request a motion to go with option two on the vending machines, which would be a one snack machine with twenty eight selections. One beverage machine with eight or nine selections, and this will be by cradle vending.
Mm-hmm, sounds good, so moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gavhart.
Second.
Second by Ron, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero on that. Alright, I got a couple of things here. Would like to talk to you guys, well, we got one here, we got commissioner appointments, needs filled, emergency nine one one advisory. I think Nathan, you said you would step up on that one.
Yeah, that's one thing, like the central dispatch and stuff, so yeah.
Okay. And then Ron, uh, we got Indiana Department of Homeland Security Planning and Regional Mental Health is both commissioner appointments. Um, Tom served on those, would you like to serve on both of those?
Am I capable?
Yep.
I will.
Just raise your hand and you're capable.
Yeah, you're, since commissioner, so yeah.
Alright, so I'll look for a motion to put Nathan Gavhart on emergency nine one one fund advisory. And then Ron on Indiana Department of Homeland Security Planning and Regional Mental Health. Got a motion.
Yeah, so moved.
Motion by Nathan Gavhart.
Second.
Second by Ron, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. And one other thing I had before we get to the payroll and dockets is uh, I've had Patty reach out, reach out and start working on some kind of branding for the county a little bit, just on letterheads right now. Um, she's worked with uh, two different options here. These, these here show Davis County auditor and this shows board of commissioners. And of course, these will be, we've talked to every, we think we talked to every office except for the sessions office, correct Patty?
Yes.
And everybody seems to be in favor of doing something with the uh, letterheads. And so each one will have their own, say Davis County, whatever, and then they'll have their own information on each of their letterheads. But what we got, we got one that's everything straight bar, straight across. And then we got one that's swooping at the top and then straight across the bottom. Just get your guys' ideas, um, what you think. And then we got one that's swooping at the top, and then straight across the bottom, just get your guys' ideas, what you think? If you were in favor of it or not in favor of it, if you would like to move forward with something like that.
One thing that we worked with the designer on was to not have names on the letterhead itself. That way, we're conservative with offices change, you can still use the same letterhead.
Like Patty wouldn't put it, it would just be the others' office that wouldn't have Patty Ball on or anything like that.
So this would, kind of like pre-printed in reams?
Yeah.
Yes, and there should be pricing, I think that was sent out to you on the quantities, and then each office would be paying for that out of their own budget line item.
As far as storage, I mean, I don't want to get too anal about this.
No, it can come in as small as, I believe, five hundred.
You can order one ream?
Yes.
Okay. As it wouldn't want eight boxes, cases of-
And that would be up to each office as far as their needs.
Do you guys have a preference on how the stationery would look?
I like that one better, I think it stands out more, the logo.
To me, they all look the same, they all look good, and I could spend five hours choosing one, so whichever you two like. I do like them all, they all look nice.
I actually prefer this one better just because it looks more streamlined, but I do, I do like both of these, so.
I can go with either one of them.
Yeah, work it out, fellas.
Alright.
That's why you get the big bucks.
I don't, do we need a motion on this or not, I don't?
No, I just need directions.
I think we'll just go with that one there.
Okay, that's the one the auditor selected.
Wrong one, there always is wrong one.
So Michael, we need to address number thirteen on the agenda.
Yeah, I skipped over it again, I'm getting mad about that. So we got the twenty twenty annual report from the RDC. We did have a meeting this morning with the RDC, and it got approved with the RDC, so just, you guys have any questions or comments on the annual report for RDC for twenty twenty?
No.
No.
Look for a motion to approve the annual report for RDC for twenty twenty.
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gavhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, and all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero.
Michael, I have one more item for the good of the order.
Yep.
The auditor's office requests that all agenda items be turned in to us on the Thursday before the meeting on Tuesday. We send out the agenda to the advertising and the different entities that need notification, and then on Fridays, we send out the packet to you for review, so.
I'm one hundred percent in favor of that, I think everybody needs to have, if you're going to be on the commissioner's agenda for the Tuesdays, you know, Tuesday meetings, it's got to be in Patty's office the Thursday before, and so she can get everything taken care of, sent out to the commissioners, and get everything out to the news.
Greatly appreciate that.
Alright, I appreciate it. You guys have anything else?
No.
Ron?
Yep.
And did the audience have anything? Is everybody good? Alright. Look for a motion to pay payroll, pay claims, and for adjournment. Got a motion by Nathan Gavhart.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero. Thanks, everyone.